...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just like to say wow. That's a lot of voices over there. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. I move for approval of the agenda with the following amendment. Add additional certified and last line personnel actions for consideration, item eighty-three. Is there a second?
There is.
Do you have my com? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand. And I believe, Loni, are you going to be introducing our first guest for tonight?
Yes. It is my honor to introduce this recipient that you're recognizing tonight. It's Betsy Lohmeyer. She's the Library Media Specialist at Playmell. Betsy, I know you're back there. Come stand by me. Betsy applied for a grant through the American Association of School Librarians. It was the first year for this particular grant. And she, with some of her kids, put together their proposal. She carried out her plan and submitted it and was chosen from all the applications that went in. It was the first year for the award, and so all the time it was, "Betsy Lohmeyer wins it!" And when I saw Betsy Lohmeyer's name come over the webpage for the American Association of School Librarians, I thought, "Oh, how many Betsy Lohmeyers can there be?" Luckily, there's one, and I know that one. So she, here's what the award is. It's the Roald Dahl Miss Honey Social Justice Award. The grant recognizes AASL members who have collaboratively designed a lesson, event, or course of study on social justice. It is donated and sponsored by the Penguin Random House. The award includes $2,000 to the recipient, $5,000 to the school library, and $1,000 in travel expense. So she and her husband traveled to Las Vegas. And she had her moment in the spotlight, and she had the room in tears. It was a packed room because it was a lot of different awards, and she was toward the end. And there were people with their tissues doing this, and people doing this because they had goosebumps. So Betsy's going to share a little bit with you on what her collaborative project was.
All right. So mostly, you need to know that I wouldn't be able to do any of this if I didn't have amazing teachers that I'm working with because I got this idea at the end of March. And I come into them and say, "Hey, let's do a giant project next month when you have a million other things going on." So Kim Venetta in 4th grade, and Jillian Algrim, who was in 3rd grade last year, she's in 2nd grade this year, and Kelly Gerber, who was at 6th grade at Playmell last year, now she's at St. Dominic's. They're just amazing and said, "Yes, we'll work together." And they brought their kids in, and we brainstormed, and we planned, and we wrote menu activities. And Kristi said, "That sounds great. Keep going." And without that, without the spirit like that where the library and the school is working together all the time, we wouldn't be able to do any of this. So that's the first thing. My name's on all of it, but it's those ladies who are working with us to make sure that we're really doing what we can for kids. But Kristi said that I have to tell you some of my remarks that I gave in Las Vegas. So I'll just amend it a little bit because there's a lot of thank yous to Penguin Random House and stuff like that. But I'll tell you basically what I said, which was, "One of the biggest joys, one of the greatest joys of this project was watching the students' imaginations just ignite." It's impossible to read Charlie and the Chocolate Factory without feeling cold and hungry and without seeing Willy Monka's Chocolate Factory in your mind's eye. And once students make that leap to imagining things, it's not hard for them to then think about a cold prison in the Andes Mountains where there are babies who live with their mamas and don't have blankets and toys. And once that imagination is ignited, then the heart hungers for action. The kids were thrilled to be able to make blankets for those kids. We made thirty-three blankets tied with fleece and embroidered flannel blankets. Mrs. Venetta taught all those kids how to do simple embroidery stitches, and they stitched peace and faith and hope, or peace and faith and love in Spanish on the corner of the blankets, so paz and fe y amor, these were nice short words, on the corners of the blankets. And we sent those away. And they're not there yet. They're still en route because you can't send things to the post office at the door. But they're going down in suitcases. I think that Roald Dahl knew that about imagination, that once you wake up someone's heart and someone's imagination because the worlds in his books are so vivid. They have beautiful vocabulary, really great for teachers. They have vivid pictures. The villains are very, very bad. And they invite children to look at the real issues in front of them. How should kids treat each other? How should adults treat children? What are the choices and possibilities in our own lives? One of the early scenes in the book, Grandpa Joe tells Charlie, "Sometimes what you imagine comes true." And I imagine that every time a child reads a good book, it shapes them into the person that they were meant to be. This project showed that that is true. I imagine that we as librarians and teachers get every day the chance to lead kids to those books and help shape them into being those people. And that every day, teachers and librarians have changed the world. So that's why this sort of project was really exciting for us because that's what we want as teachers and librarians, to work together and build kids who are going to go out and make the world a better place. So I really need to thank Kim, and Kelly, and Jillian, and Kristi, and all the kids, and all of you for giving us the flexibility to do things like this and see the great things that come out of it. But I want the kids to talk to me too, so I brought three kids. And they have some pictures of their blankets, and they're just going to come and spread out and tell you a little bit about what they did. So Macy, and Kylie, and Anna, come here. Bring your pictures. And Anna, come right here. And just tell them about your project. And Macy, come right here.
She's got a little picture. Tell them what you have planned. She chose different people to interview. So we had a call to your home students. And then during kindergarten, we cut the piece of paper and retired it. And after the morning, they were trying to share it with the students.
That's a while, the camera. It's a little long. And there was special attention, like, you know, the chocolate bar.
And the one question. Were you like, "Kenny, Loni, maybe more Charlie?" I was like, "I don't know." So far, I've been concerned by that.
Are we doing these during school or after?
I don't know. We're in the middle of the process. But as some people did, we're asking them to go to the school. And I think that we're going to be, uh, we're going to be, uh, and it's going to be.
Very cool. We're very good.
We. There's a corner.
Awesome.
Thank you.
What's your name?
Anna.
Anna, what?
They came to have their family. And they said, "We're going to go to the school."
Very cool.
Just, um, we're kind of good. Just say thank you.
That's right.
Thank you. Is it any wonder that she won? We're so proud. Anna and Kylie, make it count. Come with me.
I'll go. You don't follow right by me, Jake, and everybody's taking this, right? She's your favorite.
Sure you did, like a notification when you called.
Yeah. They're partly dependent future of us.
Okay.
I'll let you know. Thanks. Thank you. Good job. Thanks. Thank you.
I have to admit, when I heard about it this past summer that Betsy had won this, after seeing her presentations at Program Budgeting, I knew if anyone was Miss Honey, Betsy was Miss Honey. And then, Mrs. Botts, are you ready? Are you in your career ready?
Well, we don't have too much more to add about that. When we knew that she was coming today to accept this, I asked her to have the kids come up and to give some of her remarks. So that was the beginning of our building presentation. First of all, I would like for all of my staff that are here to stand up. And I will go around the room and introduce everyone. First of all, we have Matt Papson. He's 5th grade. Linda Arts is our music teacher. Next to her is Regan McGraw. She's our literacy coach slash VSL slash interventionist slash everything girl. Jillian Algrim is 2nd grade. Liz Vesalian is 3rd grade. Caitlin Bill is 1st grade. Rebecca Stevenson is kindergarten. God bless her. Betsy, you've already met. She's obviously our librarian. Kim Venetta is our 4th grade teacher. And Becky Swan is our new 6th grade teacher. So those are all of my staff members that are here tonight. We just want to let you know that our year has started off really well. The kids are already in it. They're working very hard to meet all of the objectives that they need to meet. We've already taken about ten minutes of your time, so I need this to play. I have a little five-minute video. I'll turn it off under. We all enjoyed, on Facebook, watching Betsy's adventure here over the summer in Las Vegas. And she and her husband are posting Miss Honey Justice, the hashtag. And so that's her nickname around school, Justice. Obviously, we've only been in school for less than two weeks, so most of these images are from last year. But these are just some of the things that are going on at Playmell. Do I have eyes on her? I should recognize her. Who are you as well? Science, trivia. Obviously, historical tour. Children's author, who visits us. Spelling letters. Dr. Carlin.
Yeah, poor man.
Thanksgiving dinner, I received a hundred and twenty pounds for lunch. That's me. Again, we just want to thank you for your time. We've already just.
So thank you, Ms. Botts.
You're welcome, Ms. Botts.
I didn't receive any correspondence. Then we could move on to the consent agenda. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda. I have a question to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Found a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Pounds. Jean said no. That he can't come back.
And I think you're going to present on 3rd grade readiness.
That's good.
Hey, Wally, it's, uh, I may do one other little recognition here. I don't know if you've already noticed, but we have Joshua Ursick, who's a Lawrence City High School student from VBS, who is here tonight to film and look at you for us. So my understanding is we'll have a VBS student here for each of the meetings. And Joshua says he'll be back at least one more time this semester of the technical term. So Joshua, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Joshua. Welcome.
Okay, are you ready? This evening, I would like to update you on the progress made to board goal 1.5 that relates to student readiness and parent communication. And I'm going to update you first on the progress we've made with 1st and 2nd grade readiness, followed by a report from the teachers who worked on 3rd grade readiness. And then we've done a little bit, I've got some teachers here who have worked with some grade level meetings. They volunteered to do some of this on their own. And I would like for them to share with you how that's going and how that kind of relates to that parent communications piece. But as you're aware, we are in the second year of a three-year pilot for 1st grade readiness. We reported in April that we have fewer retentions than ever before, more consistency in data collection and qualitative data that we are meeting with parents more frequently. In May of last year, Dr. Atha, Dr. Dennis, and I met with every principal and looked at the rubrics for every student that was being retained. We talked about the student. We talked about the interventions that the student had been getting. And we talked about the questions that it did know. We also met with the kindergarten team at the end of the year to make any changes to the rubric that they felt needed to be made. And at the end of the year, they suggested two changes that they would like to make to the rubric. One of them was on the developmental reading assessment that assesses fluency and comprehension. They felt like we were giving credit, too much credit, to students who were not really reading. So at that point, we eliminated the Level A. It goes from A to 3. We want students to be at about a 3 in kindergarten before they move on. We decided to eliminate the A and not give that any points at all. And then we made some fine adjustments to the Ames Web assessment. Then at the beginning of this year, as they were talking about, they're beginning their in-service with Engage New York. They realized when they looked at the rubric that they were asking students to recognize numbers to 20 and to write numbers, or recognize numbers to 100 and write numbers to 100. And Engage New York really only had the criteria of going to 20. Well, they didn't know how much time they were going to have this year to be able to get to the 100, if they were going to be able to get all students to 100. So they decided, as a group, that they would like to move that back to 20. But they also said, not that we're going to change our expectations for kids. We've always had the expectations that our kids can count to 100, they can write to 100, they can recognize numbers to 100. We're still going to have that expectation, but we may not get all kids there. So it was their decision that they wanted to move that back. This will be the first year of the 1st grade pilot. And I can tell you that teachers have already, or students, teachers have already been talking with their parents in open house. They've been talking about the rubrics and they hold in parent meetings to discuss the readiness rubrics for the 1st grade, for the 1st graders. And so this evening, we have a group that's been working on 2nd grade readiness, and they're going to present to you what criteria they had put in place. And let them do it. Do you guys want to recognize yourselves?
I'm Sarah Craft. I teach at AP Berth.
I'm Amber Doyle, and I also teach at AP North.
I'm Jillian Algrim, and I teach at Playmell.
I'm Linda Fanch, and I'm at Jenny Wilson.
Yes. Do you want to take one?
Okay, so our goal for this was to put structures in place to ensure that all students are 3rd grade ready. We follow the three questions that the kindergarten and the 1st grade committees followed. So as we were working, we asked ourselves, "What should 2nd grader students know and be able to do?" Then we asked ourselves, "How will we know if they have learned these things? And what are we willing to do if they have not learned these things?" For all that work.
Here's a rubric that we came up with, and it looks exactly like the K-1 rubrics do. We kept phonics. We have a screener for that that'll screen them on their phonics skills. DRA, phonics, Ames Web, those are tests that we give. Anyway, vocabulary skills. And we wanted to not test them on specific vocabulary words, but test them on like prefix, suffixes, things, the skills that they need to be able to decode the words rather than, you know, meaning of a word. Changing it to an opinion piece because that's what Common Core focuses on in 2nd grade. Yep, 2nd grade. And then math, three-digit numbers, subtraction within a hype, a thousand, time, money, and problem solving. We also. We also have these rubrics starting this year at conferences, and the teachers will be talking to the parents, getting this ready for them so that they've already seen it. How will we know if they have learned it? Sarah talked, or Amber talked about some of these things. The quick phonics screener, Ames Web, reading and math, the DRA, writing rubrics, math assessments, and then problem solving. Some of these things were created by our committee just to make sure we're assessing the things that we need to from the rubric. In alerting parents, we have these things, which so did K-1. So there's the brochure over here, and then the flip shirts. And these things will be discussed with parents at conferences. What are we willing to do if they have not learned it? Well, our expectations are that all students will have received first quality education every day they are in school. We also expect that students have access to quality explicit targeted interventions at school. Each school uses the Ames Web, puts kids into interventions as needed. And those interventions, we have a protocol that uses research-based interventions with those students. Once they have mastered that skill, they are moved out of the intervention. And we expect parents to help as well.
Okay, one of the things they did this year, we decided that we were going maybe a little bit too fast. We had developed 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade readiness last year, but they weren't really ready to implement it this year because we were also changing the report card, which we will show with you at a later time. So they decided to back up a little bit and use the rubrics, but not going to change their report card this year. We changed, the kindergarten report card shows indicator-based readiness rubrics. The 1st grade report card this year also looks at a certain criteria for students to have. We're not going to change the 2nd grade report card until next year. That way, when we have a parent who has gone through with their kindergarten, now this year with their 1st grader seeing that new report card, next year they will see it again when they have a 2nd grade student. So anyway, they're going to use the rubrics this year and teach with them and share with parents, but they're not going to change the report card until next year. So anyway. I would also now like to bring the group up to talk about parent communications and what they're doing to support that piece because that, we know that that is a very important part of what we're doing right now.
Last year, to address the parent communication piece, we formed a kindergarten club. It was a grade-level meeting once a month after school. Our primary goal at each meeting was to discuss how we were sharing information with parents. Teachers were able to sign up on My Learning Plan to get points for coming to the meeting. And we generally had a pretty good turnout. Wow, this year has expanded. We've gone K-4 with the interventionists also wanting to join us. So we are very excited about this. And have a great team of teachers that are working together. And we've set some agenda items in common. And we've also left it open for items that pertain to our particular grade level. But we were determined to cover parent communication at each meeting. We've had pretty good turnout so far. And our last meeting was, last week actually, our first for the year. And we averaged 20 to 25 teachers from each grade level at the meeting. So there's a lot of interest in collaborating and working together. So we're very excited about it.
This is all volunteer. They contacted. They called, they contacted me last year and said, would you mind if we did this? And it's like, okay, no, this is great.
How often are the meetings?
Once a month.
Do you have any questions?
What kind of feedback are y'all getting from the parents?
Good parents. Last year with kindergarten, we stressed different ways to talk with the parents. And I think we shared some at a board meeting, some newsletters, homework, it's an item that they needed to sign, and some calendars that they could sign as well as catching the parents right there. Home visits, calling them on the phone, seeing what we could do. The parents have not been coming to these meetings. These meetings have been for the teachers to be together at a grade level.
As you increase your interaction with the parents, what kind of feedbacks are you seeing? What do they say?
Well, I think parents are starting to learn and understand better about how to get their child prepared. And they're starting to ask some better questions. And they're starting to seek resources and realize places where they can get it. I would say is one thing I've seen.
And I can say, I'm a looping teacher, so I took my kids from kindergarten to first grade. And, um, last year I showed them the rubrics and the brochures, and we met frequently talking about the kids and if they were struggling. And I had a few that we thought I would retain, but then they succeeded and were successful. So I promoted them first with me. And so then at the open house, when I showed them the first grade rubrics and all of that, they were so comfortable with it. They didn't seem nervous, they didn't seem surprised. They're like, oh, I know exactly what you're talking about. No, I understand, we're going to communicate about it. And so they were on board and excited. And so I think that parents are really starting to understand. So that's exciting. And sorry, we just, we're.
I'm at Ape Hubert.
Okay.
These meetings that you were talking about, first through fourth grade, they're for teachers, not parents?
They're for the teachers, that's right. And kindergarten meets all together, and first grade teachers meet all together, second, third, and fourth. And, um, Ape Hubert hosted the last meeting, which was really great. September, we're excited that the math teachers are going to come for the first half hour of our meeting and then address questions that we, we as teachers have with the new Engage New York math program. And so that would be our agenda item, parents, communication, Engage New York. And then at each grade level, we're asking for agenda items from the teachers. They email us agenda items. So then that leaves us half of the time, or maybe a little bit less, to address things particularly to our grade level.
What discussions did you guys have last time at your last meeting about how to communicate with parents? I know I talked to Danielle a little bit about that to see if they.
Yeah, it was actually really exciting because I think, you know, as a teacher, you have a lot of ideas on ways to communicate with parents. But what was neat was, I had heard some great ideas. Like one school had said that they were meeting with parents before and after school in twenty minutes. So the parents could just sign up and meet with them. And they also talked about, um, open house, which we all have at the beginning of the year. And they also talked about, um, I think it was Dojo? Dojo? Yeah, class Dojo. A lot of the, um, teachers were communicating with parents that way. So that was exciting, something I went, I thought I'd look into. So it was just nice to see different things that people are doing that, like, oh, yeah, that's a great idea. So I just think that collaboration is really good.
What is Dojo?
Class Dojo is a, it's a computer program. It's free. Teachers can sign up for classes for it, and they can monitor their behavior. If students are working hard or using persistence teamwork. They can do positive, and they can do negative. And then the parents can go on and look it up and see how their child did that day. And have, in the week, they can have like a, a pie chart that shows the percentage of positive and negative behaviors that the student had.
There's an app for it.
There is an app for it, yes.
At the kindergarten level, a group of kindergarten teachers were going to put together a real basic PowerPoint that provides the rubric information. And we'll have it translated into Spanish and English and then, um, for me, since we could. And, um, then that would be shared with all the kindergarten teachers in the district. And then they could have a parent night in their building. And then the parents could come, and, and there'd be a presentation that they could see. BO was very successful last year in doing that. And we did it at Buffalo Jones, and that was, it was a great, it was a great thing for us, too. So we are hoping to get that done before the end of September so that we can have a parent night before first conferences. So we had a chance to meet in an open house and share the rubrics and the brochures again in open house. And then we would have a parent meeting. And hopefully, if all the buildings are able to do that, a parent meeting and then conferences. So we've got three really good ways to communicate with the parents. These sites are one of them.
And the goal behind the PowerPoint was so some of the information could stay consistent throughout the district and, and also to kind of help with the workload.
We got a great group at kindergarten. I think it's because we had a year to gel. We're ahead, like, you're ahead of the others. But, um, sharing information, PowerPoints and things that we're doing, district-wide kindergarten on our email. We're hoping to really keep that ball going and keep our sharing and communication with teachers going as well, especially our communication with parents going.
I did have a couple of questions. I was kind of wondering, considering the diverse student population that we have here in Long City, what your experience has been in, um, how much parents, how much do you expect parents to provide the, the help to the students versus how much intervention, um, is accomplished at school? I'm not sure, you know, how much you're depending on the parents to, to make up that difference or whether most of it is accomplished in school or it's fifty, fifty, I just don't know.
Can you guys give some examples of, you know, the end of the year last year, when you had a student, they were kicking in a little bit, and how you partnered with parents on that?
Well, I know one thing I did is, um, I threw Kiwanis, you could get a grant, and I asked for some money to put together sight word bags. And then I collected up materials to put in the bags. I had a parent night so they could come in and see what the kind of games were. And then I sent those home at the end of the school year for the kids to take home and work with. And I also included simple things like, just like a, a journal with a pen they could write with, with, you know, and little kindergartners thought that was the coolest thing ever. Like a little activity pad and some crayons. And just to kind of, um, keep them doing some things that are school-like.
I know for one student that I had that was struggling, and she was one that I did the rubric on and I was concerned with. So I met with parents, and initially we had talked about, you know, um, I was concerned about possible retention. I will be doing this rubric on her, I was explaining all this, everything to her. But what I did was I went through all my assessments, and I looked at what she was struggling in, what specific skills. And so then when I visited with mom and dad, I said, these are the skills she's struggling with. Sight words is one of them. Or in math, it was, you know, she's unable to write her numbers, or she cannot recognize her numbers. And so I was like, are you willing to, um, help her at home? You know, do you have, um, the ability to be able to help her? And they were definitely on board. They were excited, they wanted to help her. And so what I would do is I would just get a bag full of all the stuff that they needed. And I provided everything they needed with the paper, the pencil, the crayons, everything they needed. I made the sight word cards, and then I would send them home. And when she had mastered that, then I had filled the bag with new stuff. And, um, it worked because she's in first grade with me. And I think the parents seeing how proud they were and how proud I was and how excited she was and us working together as teamwork is, I mean, that's success, I thought, and I was really excited.
So, so is it correct that for most, the majority of students, the bulk of the intervention is at school, but parents are, are asked to supplement that? And, um, those situations where you need just an extra help? Or, or do you have the parents doing this constantly?
I would say the bulk of it is at school. I mean, our explicit intervention, like Linda Finch was saying, our explicit intervention is at school. That's where they get the most. I would say at home.
Do you want to see the parents to reinforce whether they're at school just to practice what they're doing?
It's like a support, more than anything, I would say. I wouldn't say it's.
Along with that, what I was wondering is, in your experience, um, do, are you able to determine whether our, the majority of our parents have both the time and, and, um, I guess the academic interest to, to provide the kind of support that you're expecting from, or parents? I know we have a lot of parents who are going to be used and who may not be available to the children. And I'm just wondering whether that's, that's affecting any of the children's.
Well, I can say, um, one thing I started this year was, um, every morning I have my kids write in a morning journal. And so on Fridays, I'm having them write a Friday reflection. And so they can tell about anything they've learned during the week, how they've had good behavior, how they've helped someone during the week. And then on Fridays, they've been taking the journals home, and their parents or older brother, sister, or aunt, or someone who is at home with them and can help them, just write something back to them about their entry. So, um, I've had it be in Spanish or English, and I said, as long as the kids can tell me what it says, then that was fine. So I just have a lot of parents that are really interested in just writing that, you know? And even if it has to be after the kids go to bed, or if it has to be, um, you know, when they're not up in the morning, they're still able to write to their student, and then the kid can read it, and then, you know, have that communication just like there is an interest in their students, even if they can't be there all the time, whenever the kid's, you know, awake or that. So it's really worked well for me so far.
Is there wasn't any information on there as to what occurs if the child doesn't meet the required?
That's kind of open communication, and that will be a decision based on the child's learning, on the interventions that they receive. And it will be a decision made between the teacher, the parent, and the administrator at the end of the year. It will be a great decision whether to retain that child or not, come on. Chances are, by the time they're in second grade, then they may or may not have passed kindergarten, first grade. If they get to second grade, they're going to be in interventions. They're, we're all going to be working together. It's going to be a constant communication between everyone to decide what to do when this student who is still struggling.
I just think we have such a diverse student population that it's important to represent that. So our students come from a variety of different home situations where they may get a lot of help or maybe not too much. So, um, I do like the fact that, that we're, um, laying these things out and that the students in all the schools will have, you know, similar instruction.
On, particularly on the earlier ages like kindergarten, how has the rubric been adjusted? Or how have we incorporated some of those, um, sort of intangible professional judgment aspects of, is this child socializing? To what extent it's getting in the way of performance on, say, tests? And then the other aspect of that are, how deep are we in alternatives for some of our data sources for the rubric? For instance, a child can perform on a timed test differently than a untimed test. You know, we have different ways in which they learn. You guys are the professionals, how would you address that?
For kindergarten, at present, we don't have a social measure. For the timed test, Ames Web is a timed test for letters and for the sounds of the letters. But then we also test them one-on-one with no time constraint. So they do have a one-minute timed test that's scored on them. They also have, um, an untimed test where they have time to think. The time just gives us a reminder of how fluent they are. And the untimed is, do they, you know, can they recognize this number maybe, or this letter? Maybe they have a, they need a little bit more time. So the time issue is addressed in both measures. The DRA is not timed, but there is a fluency component to see if they're struggling over the words. When the fluency goes down, the comprehension goes down. But it measures the comprehension and the accuracy of what they're reading, which words they're getting correct and which words they're missing. And also, are they understanding what they're learning? So we've tried to use some measures that look at different, different ways that the child is learning. Yet they struggle on the timed test, or the timed test, there are other measures. And so that wouldn't be the one thing that helped them that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'm kind of, I guess I'm trying to wrap my mind around how we take sort of, since this is a mandatory promotion, mandatory retention tool, it, it seems wise to allow input by the professional teacher-parent relationship there at the local school. And I'm just trying to wrap my mind around how we take something that's an absolute and apply some of those intangibles into the rubric that ultimately becomes an absolute. They have to be promoted, or they have to be retained. And I guess, sort of a related question to that, is there any downside to an absolute must using that rubric?
Well, it does take away some parent and teacher judgment. But on the other hand, um, it's, everything's very clear. Like, on the one student I had to have the meeting on, you know, I kind, I was really kind of fearful of the meeting, and I kind of decided, I'll just speak unless I'm spoken to. But, you know, we were able to, you know, look at the rubric, and we were able to tell the parents, hey, you know, here, he's really close here. Maybe if you could work on him with counting, or maybe if you could work with him on writing his numbers, maybe that will help him get that score up enough he can go on.
And then the counter to that, of course, is, what if the score is high enough, but there's concerns by the parent about mandatory promotion? I mean, is that something that can be approached before we get to that decision date? And there's got to be a basis for that concern. And so sometimes those are intangible. Not the feeling, but the judgment of that aspect of the child. And so just wanting to support that important teacher-student relationship and the support staff that supports that teacher. How do we weave that in to the rubric? Or do we want to? And to the extent we don't want to and don't make provision for it, then it's a cold, hard, see you in the next class. Which can be fine if, particularly if we're, what's the word? Teacher's moving on to the next class with the same.
Looping.
Looping, thank you. That might be just fine. But I'm just wondering.
Lots of communications, like, between the kindergarten and the first grade, at least at Edith Sharman. So, you know, um, like, the first grade teacher that had some of mine that were really close, she knows who they are, and she knows that she needs to keep a close eye on them. And like, their rubric can go on with them. So then that next teacher has a good idea of where those, some of those strengths and weaknesses are, and maybe some areas that need to be concentrated on.
So particularly if there's a concern, that's to simply communicate it.
Yeah.
We're hoping to have a safety net in place, but, you know, we're going to be able to help our kids.
I was just going to say, I think what's important, too, is the consistency. Because we do have movement in the district, and even though we do our best to not have that, and it's the same in every first grade or kindergarten classroom regardless. So it's not that she says, oh, I feel this child should be retained, and I'm like, oh, I think they should be promoted. And I think that consistency of the rubric allows that child to move from building to building. And those parents and teachers know that this is what's expected, and this is where, where we're going to go. And I think that's important, too. It's a flush.
Strength, I think, of the rubric, is that early engagement and consistent standards.
Just kind of on the kindergarten report card I just brought up, it, it seems that in an effort to obtain consistency, at some levels of this, we're removing the judgment aspect. Where I, I sort of like the way the third grade readiness program is, where there's more of a balance of that. Because these ten things, the number on whatever grade level it is, you know, they're really just a snapshot of some of the things you would. you know, they're really just a snapshot of some of the things you expect a child to learn at a certain level. And if we're, if we're working to intervene or to make sure that they know these things, we're essentially teaching to the test, which is something that we have, you know, tried to avoid. Because learning is so much broader than just, just these things. And I really like the balancing aspect of the third grade readiness program as opposed to the more stringent requirements that are, are in place earlier. I think that they hamper both, both the student, all three, the students, the parents, and the teachers. And really the having the ability to insert judgment at those earlier levels would be more helpful to everyone.
And we do reevaluate this at the end of the year. So this year, at the end of this year, we will look at our kindergarten, at their feeding. I'd be able to see if there are anything, if there's anything that needs to change. We'll also look at first grade to see if there's anything that needs to change on that. So we continue to have these conversations. And everything you're bringing out here, we continue to discuss. So we look to play a little bit. Have a great week with the teachers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your hard work and dedication, we appreciate it.
I'm going to open up for a board of education discussion. The, on the committees, it looks like we have at least one more on technology. If anyone has interest, would you like to sign up? She's coming up. Is there anything?
And I'm sorry, because I'm going to send it down here. I just wanted to have a question.
I think you're the last one here, last one. So anyone who gets a chance to sign up for the board now, please. Anything else for more of any discussion?
I have, we've had a very smooth, we've, we're going and certainly through the principals and the teachers and government for maintenance to food service, so on and so forth. But we have had a glitch. We've been able to talk to most all the bureaucratic. We've got some problems in our transportation department. Kids are on the bus too long in the morning. Some kids are on the bus too long in the morning, some are on the bus too long in the afternoon. We have some examples at our schools where buses are not able to arrive in a timely manner. So we've got some supervision issues before the buses can get there, pick the kids up after school. And the problem is a driver shortage. So I'm looking at putting together a contracted service with First Student to bring five drivers in from Wichita, starting next Tuesday after Labor Day, and contracting them on a week-to-week basis for 39 days up until November 1st. And this should resolve the problem until we can hire some drivers. It might take anywhere from, we might hire a driver and they'll be able to go to work the next day. If we can, then we'll reduce that contracted service by one from five to four. Then, but some drivers, when we hire them, it takes maybe three weeks to get them licensed to where they can step up and drive for our kids. But I want the board fully aware, I want the community aware that there is a problem and it's due to a driver shortage. And it's something that we're, we're trying to remedy. And we're not taking it lightly. And there's some, many routes are running as smooth as they ever have. But there's some out there that's creating situations, in my opinion, that's not good for kids and not good for families. If you have to sit on the bus two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon, that's too long. We want that to be closer to an hour or less. And that's what we're shooting for. So you want to know that we're looking on that. And probably there'll be something coming to the board. As I told you, the contract will come to the board for your approval September 8th. And we'll already have this in place. So if I consider this an emergency, that needs to be addressed right now. That said, are there any questions? First student. And Tim, you're the only board member I am about to talk to. I've talked to the rest of you and I haven't connected. So I'll gladly answer any questions you may have after the meeting.
I just didn't hear the names, so...
First student, it's a national service, a lot of school districts. They don't own their own buses, they contract that service.
And I know you, maybe I think you said that in your comments, but certainly not only sitting on the bus, but that whole supervision aspect, wherever the students are. There's some concern out there. So I think hopefully it would help people to know this is considered an emergency and that you've got a plan and that you're acting on it. I know there's some parents that are trying to make adjustments in carpooling. So the resources of the parents is always helpful. So I'm glad that you're on top of it.
And it should be noted that we've got teachers staying beyond their contract time. We've got teachers coming within their contract time. We've got principals on both ends of it too. So there's a lot of people out there giving time to provide that supervision right now. But we can't, we can't continue to do that. We, we're either going to have to start paying for it or we're going to... The best answer is to hire drivers. That's the best answer.
And that was the fundamental reason for this crisis was just an unforeseen loss and change in number of drivers. You've got to have a certain number of drivers.
Yeah, that's right, Mark. But also it's, it's a problem, it's a problem at Dodge, it's a problem at Liberal, it's a problem in most every school district that hires their own bus drivers right now for some reason. And there's a lot of demands today based on a bus driver. It's a, it's a very demanding job and it requires certain skills and their licenser is increasing. And the rigor to get a license to drive a bus is increasing, not decreasing.
Any questions to comment?
No, bad issue.
Anything else on that issue?
With the presentation we heard, it's exciting to hear the collaboration of the teachers for implementing the curriculum. And particularly I heard the New York, proper beach, Engage New York on mathematics. Certainly heard a lot of feedback on, on, that basically to me says there's a lot of opportunity for us to find resources for to play that critical role of helping their kids with their homework. And so I know the staff is on top of this. I want us as a board to think in terms of ways that we can support that added support to parents. Because it's a new approach. And certainly I think we're in this college and career ready for the long haul. And it sounds like parents could use some help. And that's got to tax the teacher. So it's good to hear the teachers have a process of collaboration there monthly. But the parents have daily homework to try to help with. And so I think that's a real need in the short term if we can find a way to do it.
Dr. Dennis and Mrs. Rodrick will, on the agenda September 8th, will be presenting an update of where we are on Engage New York. And I believe there'll be some teachers here as well. But there will be, be a parent coming to assure exactly what I...
Thanks.
I did know, when I was doing the research for my testimony up at the Kansas Legislature, there was a website that had different areas depending on your interest. And there was a specific parent website for Engage New York that I went into and it was talking about the homework and that type of thing. So parents might be able to find that helpful.
And steering to it will be helpful, I'm sure.
Anything else? Well, I don't think that B. Door is the best time, but not too bad. The next board meeting, next meeting of the Board of Education will take place on Monday, September 8th, 2014, at 6 o'clock P.M. here in the board meeting room. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Alex Winters, Mark Second, all in favor? Thank you.